Good afternoon. Pleasant to say good afternoon. We're at West Street School. It is October the 11th. It's four o'clock in the afternoon and we are actually in one of our schools. Our elementary school, not our elementary school. Let's be honest, this is my elementary school. This is where I went to school. I'm going to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Spiro Thomo?
Here.
Andrew Murch. I imagine that some people are going to be late. It's quite a different location for us. Erin DeMello? Timothy Messier? Kathy Lapiore? Again, I hear voices in the hall. And Wallace McKenzie. First, oh, we just gave up one minute too soon. We'll let them get settled.
Okay. The first thing on our agenda is the approval of minutes. I'm going to ask that we postpone that until our next meeting. I would like to concentrate on the good news of being in our schools, of seeing what's going on. We have quite a few back issues of minutes to do, so I thought if I could have a motion to postpone to our next meeting, so moved. Mr. DeMello, second. Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you. Citizens Forum. Do we have any comments from any of our staff, our students, our former school committee members? Maybe we'll have some comments after the presentation. West Street School presentation.
Well, great. As just before turning it over to, sorry, it's directional, sorry about that. I want to welcome everyone to West Street School. And before I turn over the presentation to Principal Joanne Wilson, I wanted to first apologize that our after-school programming has been delayed a week. I had hoped we'd be able to see that in action. I am very thankful to Southbridge Community TV for helping us get this done tonight. And they've actually produced a video showing a snippet of what the day and the life of West Street is like, and we're going to be able to view that this evening. But without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Wilson. She has put together a presentation. I think you're going to see that she is very proud of her school, and this is why we're seeing measured improvement here at West Street. So I thank you for your being here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Dr. Valar's right, I love my school, and I have a feeling you're going to see that throughout the presentation. For those of you that don't know me, this is my fourth year here, and I'm really proud of that because I know that that's been a concern along the way with other leaders. Just for your information, I've been doing this for 33 years, so this is not my first rodeo. I've been an elementary principal for nine years, and that's really important for me that you know that, because what I brought with me has really helped guide me here. As an educator who's been in mostly in urban education my entire life, I had the honor and pleasure of helping as a math coach and a math specialist for many years to have two Level IV schools get out of Level IV. With my assistance, I was part of a team. It wasn't me, but it was really important to be part of the team. And my hope is down the road that we'll follow one of the schools that I was at before, and they are now a National Blue Ribbon School. So that's down the road. So that's down the road, but we're going to get there. It'll take some time, but we're going to get there. So welcome. So the vision of our school is, and one of the things you're going to hear me, hopefully hear me say, is it's our school. Yes, I am the leader, and yes, I put the right people in the right seats, I believe, but they were doing the hard work. So children who feel safe, secure, and seen will become successful with consistent, sustainable curriculum and effective effort. I really believe this. When I came here and I was very honest with Dr. Valar, I needed to get the culture and climate where it needed to be. I needed children to understand who was in charge, but doing it in a loving, firm way, and we've done that. They need to be seen, they need to be heard. I am not of the old adage, you know, quiet children are happy children or obedient children. They can talk, it's okay, it's good talk, right? It's all the right talk. So I'm really excited about that. For me, the sustainable curriculum is critically important, and I was really excited to join a district who had thought about that and put some curriculum in place. And not only just putting it in place, but making sure there's professional development along the way for teachers. It's real easy to hand someone a book and say, here, teach in the teacher's manual, but we don't do that here. And that's a really proud moment because we have something really special here in our professional development, and it's been really helpful for teachers. I will say that, like other schools in our district, we have had some teacher turnover. The people who have left have left all, I really believe, for the right reasons. They're closer to home, all of those things. It was never, you've gotten, you've given me too much learning. You've given me too much support. Can you ever have too much support? I don't believe you can. So really, I'm very proud of that work and what we've been able to wrap staff in. But you all know, because you're sitting here as well, effective effort. Children have to put the work in. They don't have to get it right all the time. They have to be able to show they're willing to do the work, and we're going to support them along the way, but that's not a problem. In my three years, past three years, I've been very honest with Dr. Valar about it takes all of us. If you walked, well, I know you walked in the front door, but one of the things we're really proud of is our family tree. And the kids love that family tree. It shows all the educators currently. My hope is, once we have the pictures from our first round of photos with the kiddos, that we'll be able to put them as well and intersperse them, because we really are a family. I list all the teachers purposefully, because I want you to know that I've been very thoughtful in my asks for Dr. Valar. I've always given him data. I need this because, I need support here because, and we've had conversations around it. And it's been very open conversations, it's sort of, and also some give and take, because we also know there's not an overwhelming budget, right? You don't have a money tree. No one has a money tree. So I really, I'm really thoughtful about if I'm asking for something, oops, sorry, I've thought ahead about what that looks like. We're very honored to hold our district's dual-language program here. Our first class of dual-language is now in sixth grade, so I had the pleasure of being with them since third. And they're special, they really are. Our kiddos now, we have, we have found that our dual-language program, and our hope is to have a seal of biliteracy when they leave high school. And they really are beginning to feel comfortable with the other language, which is really exciting. We have some growing pains. Everything does, of course, but we're really happy about that, to be able to house that here. They add something special to our school, they really do. They are actually going to be leading, it's Hispanic Heritage Month, as you probably are very aware, and this Thursday, we're having our celebration. And they are so excited. One of the little kids asked me the other day, a fifth grader said, you know, we're having a celebration next week, because we are. Can I wear my outfit? I said, well, talk to me about it. And she explained her beautiful dress and her, I said, please do. I mean, I can't wait to see it, because she's so proud of her heritage, which I think is incredible. And what a gift it is that we're giving these children. We also house our district's social-emotional learning classroom. We call it the Connect Classroom. And these are children who may have some behavioral concerns, but they have some emotional disabilities that we are really fine-tuning. Over the last three years, we have come to a place where we have the supports in place that we're now able to grow, not just socially with these children, but their academics are beginning to grow. They weren't in a place for learning. And that's okay. We're getting them to be in a place for learning, and that's really the goal, obviously. So that really was just so that you could see who's here. Over the last three years, we've had four initiatives to mirror the district. And so we have literacy, math, attendance, and our student engagement and our climate culture. So with our key initiatives, one of the things that we do at the end of every year is we present to our colleagues about sort of a year in review. So some of the slides I'm going to share with you today are really also part of what I've shared with my colleagues at the end of the year and then how we're going to grow from there. Because one of the nice things, having a small district, is the colleagues are not just colleagues, they support staff for each other. And it's really helpful, because some of the things that we've now put in place, I saw Jeff House do at the middle school, like, you know what, I like that, I'm going to try that here. Or vice versa, you know, Katriga at Charlton will say, oh, I like that, I'll try that there, which is nice. We are using iReady as our baseline for iDiagnostic, Dibbles, IDEL. Our WIN group is What I Need. So each child is put into a group based off of their scores and where their path is going to be, and they'll have that once a day, excuse me. We are partnered with a Hill for Literacy, and they've been with us for quite some time, my four years here. And they've also longed that we have Science of Reading professional development. So what's nice about this is, last year, we did that for everybody across the board, and it was incredible professional learning. Not only did we do it as a staff, we also did it as administrative team. So it was really nice that, whereas I may have missed something in one, and I caught it the next time, and the teachers won, we're doing the similar this year. For anyone new, we are having them go through the whole series from the beginning, and any of our returning staff are now diving deeper. And it's really nice, because it's the application piece that they really, they can use it tomorrow in their classroom, which is ultimately what we want them to do. Our math instruction is the same with the iReady. We have the children take the diagnostic. We just finished our diagnostics for the fall, so we're now using that data to jump into grouping. We have a real fidelity to Ready Math, which is really critically important. One of the things I'd share before is the curriculum needs to be sustainable. And I'll share when I get to the math slide a little bit more about that. We also are in collaboration with Looney Math for our math coaching. We have a new coach this year who's come on board with us, and she's already met with staff three times, and it's been really helpful, and just really having that collaboration with them. Attendance is a real proud moment for West Street. I'm going to boast for a minute, because I love my school. We were the top of the chain last year in the district. I think we ended the year at 94.8 or 93.8%. We worked really hard at that. You can't learn if you don't come to school. We all know that. And we have a lot of battles, and they're not real battles, but when it rains, we have a lot of walkers. They don't come to school. How can we, how can we help that? You know, we bought umbrellas. It was something simple, but it was like, you need an umbrella, I'll get you an umbrella. We had a lot of conversations with families around that, and I have a slide all about attendance. We have weekly attendance meetings. The assistant principal runs those with the family liaison and our City Connect coordinator. That has been a really great partnership over the last two years. Our City Connect coordinator is a social worker, and it's great, because she has lines of communication with people that I wouldn't necessarily know in our community, and she's able to reach out and get the supports that we really need. We had a meeting just the other day. A little one told us that she doesn't feel she gets enough attention at home, because her siblings have some needs and they have some people stepping in. So we connected them with big brothers, big sisters, because she also deserves something. We wouldn't have known that had we not had an attendance meeting for something completely different, and she brought it up. So it was nice to have those connections with that family. One of the things that we do is, and I will tell you, it's a time saver for us, which is helpful, so we can spend the time, boots on the ground with conversation, is we have automated calls that go home every day. By 9:15, it's enough families know, okay, you didn't call in, so we don't know why your kiddo's not here. So like, please know, we know they're not here. We've had some parents call us and say, oh, are you sure? Well, I don't see them here, so I'm kind of sure. And the positive about that is they know we're paying attention, and that's really important to us. And our student engagement, our climate and culture, I think for me personally, this is where our biggest growth has been in my three years. And I'm going to share some data along the way with you. One of the things that we have, you know, opportunities to respond PD with our Hill partners, our Looney partners, we have PD for professional development. Actually, my, one of my Tier One coaches is here. Thank you, Mrs. Pratt, for being here. We have coaches who really want to be able to support the students in the moment and then support the teachers with how to then do what we need to do. We've had support of a lot of people. We have some weekly raffles, we have events. The stuffed animals up there are all donated by random people. Like, we have a weekly raffle. Kids love to get a stuffed animal and a book, so we always try and pair those things together. The closet actually behind everybody there is full of things that people have donated. How lovely is that? They don't need it in their school, in their house anymore, or it was given to them and they don't need it. So we appreciate the help. And we also have, through the district, we have a robust budget for that as well. It just happens to be like, oh, do you have a Pokemon? Well, I don't have a Pokemon, but we can find a Pokemon, because that's what the kids want. So our literacy information here, and this is one of the things that I shared with my team last year at the end of the year, is we take our diagnostic. And obviously, for familiarity, green, yellow, red. Green is usually, that's the highest. Obviously, yellow is, we have some kiddos, and red is not where we want to be, obviously. But if I look at your, if you look to the left on the triangles, you'll notice that our red went down, and that's what we're looking for. We were able to move some kiddos last year. We did really scripted WIN groups, and we moved them often. Every eight to 10 weeks, we do a data meeting. But we were doing mini-data meetings with our progress monitoring, and we would notice that little Joey wasn't moving in that group, so let's put him in a different group, and then let's then monitor that for another six to eight weeks. That was very healthy and very helpful. And we would do this a lot of times through our student support team meetings, where a teacher may be concerned about a child, for whatever reason, behavior, academics, they just aren't growing in the way that we would hope they would. So we really pay attention to what they're getting. And it could be anybody. It could be a child on an IEP, a 504. Depending on what their plan is written for, we may look at a different section of their life. If it's they have a behavior plan for IEP, but now they're falling down, falling down in academics, we'll then put some plans in place for that. We really pay attention to that cycle. Honestly, we put an intervention in place for six to eight weeks, and then we check the data. Did it make, did it make a difference? Did it grow? Did they grow? And if they did, great, we're on the right track, and we'll continue on. But if they didn't, we come up with a new plan. And by that, we were able to lower our red by 15%, our yellows by 5%. And ultimately, we want them in the greens, so we were able to raise that by 19%. When I talked about the right people in the right seats, this is what this is here. And what I want to pay attention, to pay attention to say to you is, now that our climate is steady, we're just beginning to see the beginnings of growth in academics. It's going to be a steady, slow pace. I know that. But that's how, you know, the tortoise won the race, right? Slow and steady, because if you do it too quick, the kids aren't going to retain it, and I don't want that. I don't want gains just to show gains. The numbers are great, but for me, we're building community leaders down the road. The positive change, it's really about the systems we put in place, about the WIN, like I just shared with you. When this data happened at the end of last year, it was year three of wonders, so it was a sustainable curriculum, and it came with them up from Eastford Road. That's a really big deal. Children need to learn us as educators every year. They have a new teacher, they've got to learn our ways. The curriculum should be sustainable. It should be consistent, and they don't have to worry, oh, this routine looks the same in K and 1 and 5, right? That's really important. And they already know what that's going to look like. When they, a teacher says, get out your Reader/Writer companion, they know what that is. They're not learning it new. And that's been very helpful. And I know that I have seen a difference with the kiddos come to me this year even from last year. So one of the things that we always try and do for our kiddos is we try and tie literacy to some fun, because really, who doesn't like to have a little fun? So we had a book character day based off of what we were doing. This happened to be last November. And it was one of those, it was actually right before the holiday, the Thanksgiving break. And it was really good, because part of it, not only did we have this, it was for literacy, of course, but it really was also tied into our attendance goal. If kids wanted to be part of the book character day, we had to be here. So it was really helpful to have them here. They were very much into it. The top left, they didn't talk about what they were going to be, so they had a lot of kids from Harry Potter. The lower left, that was our Lorax Day, and she was the Lorax that day. Next to her, she put, they all decided where to put their mustaches, which was kind of funny, you didn't really know. So it was good. And we also got into the, we also got into the fun of it with the teachers and the staff, so bringing literacy to life, that's the hope. So like the reading instruction, I wanted to share with you our math instruction information from last year. Again, you'll notice that our triangle, the red is smaller, which is our goal. Very similar to the reading. We do have small group instruction. We're working on our math WIN, our What I Need groups. That's a little slower pace, just because I'm really trying to get teachers to have a firm grasp of their understanding of mathematics. I was a math specialist for 16 years, so it's something I love, but not everybody loves math. And people have some real phobias around math, so we really try and support the teacher around making sure they have a deep understanding of the math in front of them, so they feel comfortable in teaching it. We don't want them opening the book on a Tuesday night and going to read something for the next time the first day Monday. We don't allow that. We don't allow for that possibility, because we're planning monthly as a team, we're planning weekly as a team, and then we're even individually planning. Our fifth grade team, I will tell you, they do their monthly planning, they do their weekly planning with us, and then they also meet once a week by themselves, just to find to what's going to happen in classrooms. That has served them very well, and they're starting to have conversation of, okay, so this little guy might do better in this group, and this little guy, and it's, and we're going to try and start, like, what can we do as a fifth grade team, especially fifth grade, to get them ready to go to middle school, when they're, as we know, they travel all day. And that's a learning curve for kids. And so we want to be able to see what can we do to help that along the way. So this is our, this data is the end of our second year with Ready Math, so that consistency is critically important. I'd share with you that we have a new coach for Looney Math. And she's, like I said, she's been here three times already, and she's already met with people to make their personal goals, how they want to grow mathematically this year, so that she can better support them in class. She's actually here tomorrow. Polly's here tomorrow, and she's going to meet with a different set of teachers to set some goals, and then really to stop into classrooms and see how that's going. Her job is going to be almost over-the-shoulder coaching in the moment. So they're going to plan some lessons together and have a teacher teach it, especially with some of our newer teachers, and say, you know what, let's try this. And it's just, it's very risk-free. They've all signed up for it. They know that it's not evaluative. Polly's not going to run to me and tell me what's going on. Obviously, if there was something she needed to tell me, she would, but I truly believe in the coaching cycle, having been one for years, they have to be able to trust the person that's coaching them to allow them in. And then they'll be able to transfer that knowledge to the kiddos, which is critically important to me. So our third initiative is attendance, and there's lots on this slide, but what I'd love to call attention to is that we, I was sharing with you who the weekly meetings are held with. But in the up top right corner, last year, at the time of this presentation, I took this from the end of the year, we had 1,311 letters sent home. That's a lot of letters. We really were struggling with chronic absenteeism in the building, in the district. We had a lot of in-person meetings. We found the home visits were less effective, because if we got them into the building, it was a little easier. They were a little more receptive if they came here. They were a little on edge when we would go to their houses. Doesn't mean we wouldn't go to the house and knock on the door, but they didn't always answer. So we invited them in, we thought that was a great strategy. You're going to see, I got to put my glasses on now. Yep, 93.8 at the end of our year. We were really proud of that. We do a lot of work around attendance. The bottom left slide there, at the end of the year, we had six kiddos with perfect attendance. Now, I'm going to say to you, in my education, that seems too low. I don't disagree. The year before, we only had one. So for me, that's growth. Is it enough growth? It's not. But the, what we've been putting in place from day two of this year, we're already on finding out who's chronically absent. We know where children are. Sometimes the struggle is having a receiving school let you know, yeah, they are actually here, you can take them off your roster. Because if they don't, we don't get that information, it's an absence for us. And then it looks like, geez, where is this little one, right? And we have a couple of families who had gone to Puerto Rico at the end of the summer, and because of what happened, they're not able to come back. But we need to know that, so we can pay attention to it. We do pay attention to, we do our, the data on the top, on the right-hand side there, that's in our front lobby for anyone who visits. We also make sure that families know our attendance data weekly. We send home a little weekly report to families, and it's right on the bottom, so that they are aware of what our data is. That was a very simple add, that was one of those aha moments, like, why did I just put it on, I'm sending this home anyway, so why don't we just do this? And it's worked out really well. The kiddos in the middle, you'll see they're all dressed up. We had an ABC event at the end of the year, so for the last 26 days of school, to encourage attendance. So there was a different event, and this, it was Hawaiian Day or mismatch day, so it was all of those, which was really helpful. Back to the perfect attendance, we invited families in. I don't know if you can see, the families are in the back there. We surprised the kids with their parents. They didn't know their parents were coming, which was really a great thing. We had treats, and we had a cake, and it was just lovely, and they were just so proud. And we were able to give them little things from West that meant a lot to them. And like I said, we're already working with families. Day two, we were on the conversations. It's a lot of work, but it's the right work. It's making sure kids are in their seats, so. The last one for the key initiatives is our student engagement and our climate and culture. The, at the very top of the survey dates, if you look in the middle, 11:15 of 19, that was my first fall here. And so the numbers, what you want, our respondents are in the middle, so how many kiddos? The top one is our school, so how many kiddos responded? This is not for second grade, so you're going to see that it doesn't match our 334 or so kiddos. You're looking for 4.0, that's the scale that you're trying to get to, right? So we've been pretty consistent since I've arrived. We've been three or higher, just that one little blip. But please notice that one little blip was, obviously, you all know what that was. Yes, it was COVID, and they weren't all here. I'm really proud of what we did here at West and the district, because we had most of our kiddos onsite. At my beginning of that year, we had about 56% of our kiddos onsite. By the end of the year, we had 97%, because they wanted to get back once we were able to. I'm really proud of that work, as far as for our average, like, you know, over three, I'm thrilled with, because they know that we are here, we're going to keep them safe, and we see them. And that's really important. The numbers on the bottom are the family responses, and I'm thrilled, tickled, actually, with those numbers, because they're all above 3.5. I spent my entire first three months here with over 100 families in my office, just getting to know them and getting them to know me, because I knew there were things that they wanted to talk about. And we continue to do that. I've been able to delegate that work to the assistant principal, and to the dean of students, to the climate and culture associate. And it's been helpful, because it doesn't have to be my heavy lift, it's our heavy lift. But I thought it was really important to model that at first, because I really wanted to listen to the families. They have things they want to share, things that we'll never know unless they tell us, and things that really are hindering their children from growing, their families from growing. And they really were disenfranchised with education. They weren't sure this was going the way they wanted to for their kids. And, you know, for those of you that are parents, we always want better for our own, right? Our parents wanted better for us. It's just that's what we do. So I'm really proud of those numbers. They really speak to the fact that they know we're on the right path. We don't have it all figured out all the time. No one does in the world, I know that. But I feel like we were on a really good trajectory with the, trud directory, excuse me, with parents. And they know we have an open door, just call, or email me, and I'll call you. So it's been very, really helpful. So this survey is also pretty important. This is how our team is acting and how our team is working. It's a tiered fidelity inventory. And so our team, along with some of our district leaders, will come together and talk about where we are. When I first got here on Tier One at the, it was before I got here, it was the May before here on tier one at the, it was before I got here, it was the May before I got here, the team was at sixty-three percent, not really want where you want your team to be. It just felt like there was some disjointedness. They weren't really working as efficiently as they could. Again, it's not me, I put people in the right seats, and I, and I hope for the best based off, I don't hope for the best. I plan for the best. We're at a hundred percent at the end of last year. I'm really proud of that for tier one. And that involves a lot of things. It involves, like, what are we doing? How are we recognizing children when they're respectful, responsible, safe with specific praise? How are we recognizing classrooms as they're walking down the hallway the right way, or they're doing things the right way? It's all these little things that maybe as kid, our own children, or us, ourselves, growing up, we may not have needed this. We may not have needed that immediate paper with praise. Next, we needed the praise. Everyone needs praise. But it's part of our PBIS system, and it's really paying attention to the tier one. Like, everybody gets this. And let's see how it works. And it's been working really well. I'm very proud of those numbers. Our tier two is something that we received training about a year and a half ago. It's something that we do check-in, check-out for kiddos who need a little more. So, they have a trusted adult, actually today, Darcy, I walked in, Darcy was doing this, survey with the kiddos. We asked them to tell us two trusted adults in the building. It could be anyone. That's why I showed you the list at the very beginning. And I hope you noticed that I put the kitchen and custodial staff on there, because they could be their trusted adult. It doesn't really matter who it is. It's their champion. It's the person they trust to say things to. So, they have a time, they get a little sheet in the morning, and they check in with their trusted adult. And they go throughout their day, and they check in with their teacher along the way. And they can get, get their scores, a zero, one, or two. And then they see their trusted adult at the end of the end. And it's really important, because they talk about their day. They set a goal in the morning. Did you reach your goal? And last year, we had twenty-five kiddos on check-in, check-out, and twenty-two did so beautifully well. The other three, it really ended up not being the actual right tiered intervention for them. We found they really weren't looking for the adult attention. They were looking for something else. So, we, we changed their intervention. We have social skills groups. We have counselors onsite. We have individual plans if children need that. And that really leans us more towards a tier three. We're currently getting training this year on tier three. So, when I look at the data and we do our inventory, we received our training in tier two about a year and a half ago. We're at eighty-one percent. I feel really proud of that, and we're really making steps in the right direction. Without having training, we're at fifty-three percent for tier two, tier three, because we know what's next for kiddos. We may not know all the exact wording based off of the training that we're gonna receive, but we know this child needs a separate plan. And how are we going to do that? And how can our BCBA work with us, our board-certified behavior analyst? How can the tiered coach, how can the PBIS coaches work with this to really help the teachers figure things out? So, and then I thought I'd show you our pictures. The top one is my first year, was the spring. That actually made the paper. We were pretty proud of that. We were excited about that. The bottom one was the end of last year, and then this was the end of this past year. I love to have a, a picture at the beginning of every year if I can. The one in the middle, the fire department actually came over and took that for us, because we were still, obviously, COVID protocols, we're masked. But they brought the, I always say the wrong name, the bucket loader, I think is what it's called. They came over, they were doing a fire safety day that day, so they just stayed and took, took a picture, which was great. We have great, great partnerships with fire and police. They're really, they're really so good to us. So, our ambassadors, we started this last year, and this is something that the kids absolutely loved. It's a very rigorous process. We want them to be leaders. If you think back when you were younger, and think about the safety patrol that you may have seen and all of those, that's what this is, really. It's, it's so much more than that, but it's also that. They go through a really rigorous process. They have to do a written application why they think they would be a good fit for this leadership role. Parents and guardians have to sign off on it. They have to get two teacher recommendations. Now, we're not talking college applications. We're just saying, you know, I think that Dr. Laura would be good for it. And his teacher said, yes, I agree. Because we want them to know that, we want them to take this seriously, because this is a leadership role in our building. They'll have an interview with the climate and, climate and instruction associate. And some of the children had to have second interviews with me, because we weren't sure on the fence as far as were, are they ready for this? It was a little nerve-wracking, we know, but they were really excited about it. And we didn't tell them, we had picked our people, so we surprised them. We called on the, on the loudspeaker. We called all their names down, and they're all looking at us as they're coming down. And they all know the other people who applied. They didn't know what was going on. And they came to the cafeteria, and so we, we surprised them. Oh, my goodness, the joy. But it was, it was loud, but it was good loud, which is really great. They were able to get their badges, which they were able to keep even if they left us. They have their safety belts, which I'm holding there. It wasn't, they just looked adorable. And they got a certificate, and it was really, really great. Not every kid that applied did get in. It was rigorous as in, I don't believe everybody gets a trophy necessarily. They weren't ready for it, and it was okay that they weren't ready for it. It was, happened to be mostly the fourth graders. The, we're gonna do it again. We're gonna start the program again November first. We're gonna be starting that process tomorrow, Wednesday, for the application piece. And likely, they are ready now. But I don't think you give something to someone just because. I think they've gotta make sure, it's gotta be the right fit at the right time. So, we're excited about that. This little guy in the top left, he's actually a middle schooler now. He was so excited, he cried. He was just so excited. He was just, like, I did it. I didn't think I could do it. I did it. Like, you did it, Robert. You did it. So, I think the picture says a lot. So, these are a lot of school events that we have. Top left is our turkey trot, and the middle's our turkey trot. That's a PBIS event that children can buy into with a twenty-five dollars Wildcat cash. And so, not everybody might wanna do it, and that's okay. We have staff that, we, up the top right, we have, we had dress the days for the attendance, some gift giving. Look at this little friend with her little shades, and her sister, she came to field day. So, we invited parents for field day this year, which I was thrilled about. We had it in a way that they certainly weren't mixing in so much, because we were still wanting to be thoughtful of COVID, but they were so happy to be back onsite. It really, I was happy to have them as well. The bottom left, on the side there, you'll see that they're popping out of a box. It's our connect kiddos. They put on a play at the end of the year, and they invited staff. And I know you don't know them, but that's a big deal. For them to be able to do that, that was very impressive. We have, up the bottom right, there's Robert and his belt. He was very excited. And that, we like to have a little bit of fun, but up in the top, where you see the unicorns, that's myself and the assistant principal, morning bus duty and car duties. Don't, don't wear those, they're quite hot. But it's a lot of fun. And then some other events, too. We have a collaboration with the chief for police, and we have cops and cookies every month. We're actually hoping to have it at the end of this month. And they just come in. We select one child in each classroom, and they just have an honest conversation about what their job is. We do target some kids as far as, like, Dave's talked about wanting to be in, potentially be in law enforcement, or if we're also having a family who's really struggling right now, and they need some extra support. So, we do that as well. There's lots of different pictures. The top left, I'm gonna show you again in a moment, but we do, one of the things I wanted to bring to West Street was some traditions. I think that's been lost over time, just because we are so focused on so many things, and we need to be. But when I came, we started doing gingerbread houses as a tradition. The kids make the gingerbread houses. The first year, we did it in the cafeteria. It was amazing, but wow, was it loud. But it's okay. It was really loud. It was good loud. So, the next, past two years, we had to be in classrooms just because of COVID. We're looking forward to going back to the cafeteria. It's, it just adds a different fun to it. So, we this year, more than any year, I feel that we are one district across our schools, and we're collaborating. And I'm really proud of that. So, the academy came last year for gingerbread houses, and they're gonna come back this year. Last year, they came as participants and sort of helpers, because they weren't sure they were ready for it. And they've already asked if they can come back and be the helpers this time and lead it. I, I'm thrilled. It's a really nice collaboration that Ms. Greenie and I have, because children in social emotional programs, they need to have, to be time with their peers as well. And, and it was, it was great, and I look forward to it this year. The other one is, this year, all of our elementary schools are really working on a collaboration. And we're all, our areas are all going in the same direction. We want the same thing for our kiddos. And we want it so badly, we talked about what could we do as a district and how we could do this. So, the three schools for the elementary schools, we all have the same overarching goals. We all have the same literacy goal. We all have the same math goal, because ultimately, whoever's at Eastford Road is coming here, they're going to Charlton. So, we've gotta build off of what has happened. I was a former principal of pre-k through one school, and one of the things I firmly believe in is, we need to build our base, our, our elementary and our preschool on blocks, not eggshells, because they gotta be able to stand on it when they come to second grade, third grade, and whatnot. We absolutely have really jumped into this planning. We, as leaders, are meeting every other week. Past our principals' meetings, we're meeting and planning the PD. We're actually in the middle of planning, finished fine-tuning our PD for tomorrow, and we're using the book Teach Like a Champion. PBIS gives us the structures. Teach Like a Champion, like, gives you the, how do you do it? Like, okay, so what does that look like in a classroom? Like, I don't know what that means when you say to me, turn and talk. You're like, okay, what does that mean? And it really walks you through it. It also has some teacher videos for some modeling. So, the three schools are really working on that. And it's been really nice also for us as colleagues, because we're able to sort of see what we're doing in each other's school. Actually, today, I had the pleasure of going to Eastford Road for being part of the walkthrough. And they came here last week. And it's just nice to be able to be in each other's buildings, to see where they've come from or where they're headed. So, that's something that we're really, really excited about. And teacher efficacy is, it's the number one thing. If, if teachers are collaborating and really on point, it's the number one thing to move kids. So, that's one of the things we really wanted to focus on, and together, which also, sharing the work doesn't hurt. So, as Dr. Laura said, we would hope that we were gonna have Twenty-First Century here, but we had to delay a week. These are some pictures from last year. In twenty-one, twenty-two, we had Charlton, Southbridge, Middle, and West Street. And we are very proud to add Eastford Road this year. That gives our families a K-eight experience at some level. We are thoughtful about who is in the, in the program. We really wanna pay attention to kiddos who need the extra support. But it's not just the kiddos who need the extra support, because it really is, there is an academic time set for everybody, and then it's all about the enrichment. So, some of these pictures, these pictures were really taken over the summer. So, you'll see that the kiddos are engaged in some academics, which is great. In the top left, they were making kindness posters for the beginning of the year. If you can see the yellow, excuse me, the orange and green balloon with the, so we have the student interns. They were student interns in the spring from Southbridge High School. And they were able to, through a different grant, they were able to actually be paid, which was really great. And then many of them loved it so much, they wanted to come back over the summer. And it's a really nice pipeline for us. These are young adults who want to be teachers, they believe. So, why not get right here in the nitty-gritty and see, is this really what you wanna do? It's been great. They have all committed to coming back, except for the kiddos who obviously went to college, which is exciting. So, we're hoping to have some student interns and high school students here by November first. That's the goal. So, you're gonna see, there's lots of different things that we're able to do, a lot of academics. In the middle, I know it's kind of a hard picture to tell, but that's a solar oven. They learned about that in, in the class, and then they built the solar ovens. They made nachos. They made smores. They tried something else. I forget what it was. It wasn't successful. We didn't, oh, they tried to make a pizza. That, that didn't work. So, don't try and make a pizza on one of those. But really, the highlight is that we had a hundred twenty kiddos last year against the three, around the three schools. They got three hundred thirty hours, three hundred extra hour, three hundred thirty extra hours. That's incredible, because even though it may not have all been academic, the social emotional part was incredibly important. They were able to be with their peers. And for a lot of these kiddos, they'd go home and sit on Xbox. Well, they're here, and they're engaged with other, with our other children, which is incredibly important to us. So, this is our summer programming, and these smiles, I mean, that says it all right there. I actually shared the beginning of the school year with these, this slide, a couple of these slides from my staff. I mean, if you look at that, her face, she has a water balloon in her hand. And I know that seems odd here, but they were talking about the density and how much water to put it in, and would it, would it pop, and when will it pop? It was just, she'd never had that experience before. She didn't even know what a balloon wa, a water balloon was. And so, us to be able to give, that was great. In our summer programming, at all three schools, again, we had a hundred forty-five students in, and they got an extra hundred twenty-five hours of learning. The beautiful part about our grant that we were able to do, and Donna Zanelli and I co-lead this work for Twenty-First Century, is, we're able to take them on adventures over the summer, or have people come into us. So, we did a nice mix this past year. The bottom, where you can see, Kaius is actually looking through a viewfinder. We went to the equatorium, which was really great experience. They were able to rock climb. They were able to look, do bubbles and all of that. And we had done bubble, a bubble lesson here about viscosity, and not a big word for the kids, right? But they knew what it was by the end of it. It was great. And then they were able to put it in practice. They also went roller skating. That was a hoot and a half. The kids had never been able to do that before. That's one of my fifth graders who, I'm not going, I'm not going. She had the time of her life. And it was just because she just, she was afraid. But once she figured out they're actually, you know, something I can hold on to, it was great. Then the top right corner there, you're gonna see we had a bubble guy come in. We had a bubble, a foam pit come in, and they was all talking about the density of items. And so, kids really thought that foam pit, the density of those bubbles, because it was, it was full. That has to be a lot. And they're like, and then they'd start blowing, and they had that, like, oh, it really isn't dense, it's just full. So, we, lots of, lots of science over the summer. It was, it was great. So, this is how I lead, and I wanted to share this with you, because I, I don't know if you've ever watched TED Talks, but Rita Pearson is on TED Talk, is on TED Talk. Rita and I used to teach together in Houston, Texas. Rita's a dear friend who unfortunately has passed away. This work is, this is my work. This is who I am. This is what I believe in. And this is how I truly feel we've made gains here at West Street. Every child deserves a champion. There are no bad kids. And we have to be able to, they can do it. And again, it doesn't really matter who their champion is. And yeah, this job is tough. But we can do it. We signed up for this, and we're gonna do it together, and we're gonna do it with supports. And I think the piece about that, I'm incredibly proud about West Street, and I know across the district, is, every teacher walks in this building every day with the right frame of mind, right? They know they're gonna care. They're, they wanna be with kids. They wanna work hard. Do we have blips in the day? Who doesn't have a blip in their day, right? We, we're human. But they reset themselves, and they say, okay, what can I do better? What can I give to the kids? So, for me, the reason I feel like we are making growth, and I know we are making growth, and I'm excited about the potential academic growth, is, is the connection, is the human connection. So, what I'd love to do, if, if this goes right, oh, John walked away. He told me all I have to do is touch, click it and touch it, and then don't touch it again. So, let's all find out together. So, Charles came over last week and made a little video of my school, and just sort of, because we, and if you'd walk through and get a glimpse, so. It worked. One of the things is, I really wanted this outside to have a name. We didn't have a name at West Street, so our photo company worked with us. We were able to get signs. There's our family tree. I will tell you that my son's best friend is the artist that made that for us, and the artist who also made this. Behind that's a really scary Wildcat, so we had to cover that up, the staff that goes there. That was incredibly important to me. They know that we're a family, and we have family meetings, and that's really important. When I first got here, the walls and the hallways were all dark and gloomy, and it just felt so dark, because it's all black bulletin boards. But we really paid attention to that and really lightened things up. And we want the kids to get to know us. This happened to be how this fifth grade teacher showed that. So, you're gonna walk in, and we walked in, in the middle of a debate. It was awesome. So, Charles and I looked at each other like, get this. This is great. The debate subject was, should children have social media? Is it safe or not? They had great arguments on both sides. So, these are the kids out in the debate. They had to come out and get theirselves together, because they, they were sort of, they weren't arguing, but they were not agreeing on how to present their case. So, it was great. Charles came in here, this is in this library, obviously, and actually, Darcy was doing a lesson. We took her off guard. We surprised her. Didn't skip a beat. She kept going. So, Twenty-First Century, last year, not only went from seed to garden, we know we have to clean out the garden yet, but I wanted you to see it, so I didn't wanna clean it out yet. We harvested food. We gave food to the kiddos. They all tried their own food that they grew. It was, it was a big deal, and we're gonna keep that going. And that's West Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It could not have been better.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
That's what we wanna hear. We wanna hear that our money is going to where we want it to go to, which is our kids and their learning experience, but not just their learning experiences, you know, learn, use, learn, but to actually feel like you belong here. As I said in the opening, this is my school. I still feel like I belong here. So, I had that experience several years ago, and kids today should have exactly that same experience. Do I have any comments from my team? Kim?
You're welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us. So, obviously, very impressed with everything that's going on here. I guess, I'm, I'm just, along with being impressed, I'm just curious, you guys do all your collaborating among the district. How often do you guys get to do your learning walks in the other schools?
So, this year is our first time we're doing that, which I think is great. And I believe we're scheduled three times? That's right. Three times, we're gonna go to each other schools this year.
Awesome.
Yeah. And the nice part about that is, we do that. We do meet weekly in the principals' meeting, and then principals and the assistant principals both have different meetings. So, they're, we're all collaborating. It is hard work. We wanna make sure we're doing it together.
Do you end up bringing faculty members, other teachers with you?
That's a great question. We actually had that conversation just this past week. We haven't done that on our district learning walks. But we have done learning walks ourselves within the school, which we wanna get a little bit better at before we maybe do the next step. It's hard for teachers to see a group of people come in, and we're really mindful. We only go two or three people at a time. We don't all come en masse, because that would be overwhelming. Because we want them to see it as a big-picture lens.
Right.
And it's not, and that's not evaluative. It's sort of like, how, what's the pulse in the moment, right? And that, we're still working on them really feeling comfortable with in the pulse in the moment.
Sure.
But it's, it's definitely something we are considering, but we haven't gotten there. We've been doing some peer collaborations, as in peer observations, room to room. And the teachers have asked for that, which I'm in full supportive, and I always find coverage, because if you can see it in action when you're struggling with something, sometimes it just clicks.
Right. So, I'm a teacher. That's why I'm asking these kinds of questions. So, to go along with that, I was curious about our last school committee meeting. We talked about faculty and turnover. And I was just curious, how many new, how many new teachers do you have in the building?
Give me one second. Seven new teachers.
Seven new teachers.
Seven new teachers. Which I will say is better than my first year, and better than my second year. And next year, it's gonna be even less.
That's great.
West is best. They wanna stay here.
I believe it. You've got a lot of positive things going on here. I have some other questions, but I, I'll, I'll talk to you about some of those things later, only because it's like, teacher stuff.
I get you.
I think that not everybody needs to know those things all the time, so.
If I'm able to help, I'm happy to.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Erin? Just maybe kind of clarifying something in my own mind. Just, you were talking about the sustainability of the curriculum, and I guess, as a, not a teacher in a classroom, what comes to my mind when I think of sustainable curriculum, I'm thinking that it's been made from recycled paper or something, which I'm getting the idea is not what you're talking about.
Not what we're talking about.
That it's more like continuity?
It's the continuity, the sustainability, the consistency. It really is being able to, like I was saying, they have to learn us and our, our own personalities every year, right? They get a new teacher, and, and so they have to navigate that. They should not have to navigate what a curriculum looks like. It should just be able, obviously, a different grade level and different content potentially, a skill, content being built on last year. But when we first started either Wonders or Ready Math, the company, the book, sort of assumes they had it before. Well, they didn't, right? It was, it's new to us. So, it's, we, I don't wanna say we played catch-up, but in a way, we did, because we had to get them to understand the, how the program was run. And that feels very sustainable now that we've been able to do it, because we're committed to the, to the fidelity of the practice, and it's been working well so far. And that's why I said, I mean, I showed you some small, small growth. I really feel like we're ready to just sort of springboard next couple of years. It's gonna, we're gonna see some true growth, which is exciting.
So, that would involve, like, staying with the same publisher or the same company, as you say, and continuing that curriculum throughout the various grades, whereas before it was a variety, or?
So, I have to be honest, I've only been here since Wonders and Ready been here. So, Dr. Laura, maybe I can speak to that.
Yeah. Particularly in English Language Arts, there was a hodgepodge of different materials. And all could be considered okay at what they were doing, but somewhat confusing for a teacher to pull all together. And so, one of the first steps we did early on in our work was to identify a set that was all-encompassing. And the irony, when you do that, you then have to work with staff to understand which tools to use and when. So, it's, nothing is easy. But it's certainly, we have made sure that every classroom teacher has all the proper materials and training they need. And it does provide for consistency for the student experience, which ultimately is most important as they go up grade level to grade level. The beginning of the year is quicker if you already understand how your math is gonna lay out, how your English is gonna lay out, like, those materials are similar, and it's, it's quite helpful. And then we're building district capacity, in the sense we have more and more experts in how to use those materials across our district. So, it does give you like a flywheel. Once you get it spinning, you start does give you like a flywheel. Once you get it spinning, you start to get some momentum.
Hi.
Thank you.
My question is this. I was very impressed with your absentee, or lack of absentee record. It's quite astonishing. Is there any way that those, the methods that you use can be brought on board and suggested with some of the other schools? For example, do you have a particular time or times of the year where principals, vice principals, leaders of the schools get together and have a coffee klatch about what can be done to increase, what do you do in your school? What do you do in your school? What do you do in your school?
We do. So every month, about every month, we have a district leadership team, and we talk just about that. We talk about what's working at your school, and how can it be scaled up or scaled down, depending on what it is. We also have, our family liaisons and our City Connect coordinators are involved in the attendance in all of the schools. And the nice part about that is, those teams also have meetings monthly. And they'll, they're able to share with each other what's going well, what they need to work on. And one of the things that we really paid attention to is, we were able to create, and it came out of need in our building. We had a, just, it sounds so silly, but it was really a, a record-keeping in the, in the moment with a meeting with a family. And so we were able to scale that up for the whole district. And we also have support of Dr. Ortiz, who's the special assistant to superintendent, and he is able to be at as many of these meetings as possible. So he's able to also to share the work and share what's been happening. I think we're all doing something very similar, and it really is more grade-specific. I think the biggest piece for us, though, is getting them into the, into the building versus us going to their house. It was less scary. And we, when we recognize that, it doesn't mean we don't go. We have still gone. If we can't get ahold of someone, we're like, we're here, we'd like to talk to you. Or we'll leave a, we'll leave a, I have a little postcard that says, you know, sorry that we missed you. Please call the school to make a meeting. And we've had really good success with that, because they, they may peek out of the window and may not want to talk in that moment, because it's, it's a lot for them. But they'll call, and then we'll have a conversation. This is not a gotcha. This is a, something's going on, how can we help? And actually, all the schools, when we talked about attendance, they're all doing something similar when they go do family visits. They're leaving a note of some sort. Like, we were here, please reach out. So, no, we definitely have some time. Thank you. Thank you.
Just to add, Principal Wilson, not only do we have weekly principal meetings where our central office meets with all the elementary principals, but Principal Wilson has kind of led an informal group, leading the elementary principals as a group. She's the, the most senior, and I think they're kind of defaulted to some of her leadership, so there's some mentoring that's going on there, and I'm very appreciative of that. And as of today, Charlton Street and West Street are neck and neck on attendance at ninety-four point something.
Sure are. We talk about that, actually.
Percentage daily attendance.
We want to be successful. It's, it's great. I'd love to be on top, don't get me wrong. But I want my colleagues to be there, too. I mean, I just, I'd rather be neck and neck. Sir?
No, no, no problem. My name is Phil Othoma.
Welcome.
Maybe Dr. Valar could answer this.
What they're doing here seems to be working. Could this philosophy be applied to the secondary schools, junior high, high school? Are we talking a whole new?
Well, thank you. I, I think that as we go around from school to school, the, the idea behind these meetings is for you to hear directly from the building leaders, and I think you can then see some of what they bring to the table. So Principal Wilson has many strengths, but one of them certainly has been community and restoring the South, West Street, Southbridge community. But I would say, these approaches, the fundamentals behind all this are district-supported, and training and materials and supplies are supplied to all schools. And these key data points that she shared today are part of our district data tracking. So it's information that all schools are held accountable to. You're gonna see different flavors at every school. Each, each school has a little different culture to it. There's a little history, and that's okay. Each leader brings a little flavor, and classroom teachers bring a little bit of their own flavor. And we have to allow for all of that variability, but the key systems are all very much similar, or if not even the same.
Kathy LaPriore, can everybody hear me? Do I need this? I don't know if it works.
It's for the television.
Oh, okay. Kathy LaPriore. I was very impressed with what I heard today.
Thank you.
I have a grandson who is in seventh grade at the middle school now. He's out for a few days, because he had his appendix out, but he has gone to school in Southbridge the whole time, and has been very happy. He had a hard time leaving West Street. That was a big step for him. He really liked it here.
West is best. I said it once, I'll say it twice.
The only thing he was sad about was the mascot got changed. Did it get changed?
So the mascot that was here when I first got here was a very scary college mascot that was painted on the wall. I, I couldn't have second graders come in and get, they, they looked at it and their eyes got scared. So we, we changed it to an elementary-friendly mascot.
I just thought that was kind of funny.
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
I'd like to know, in terms of next year, is there anything else that you would like to implement that has not yet been implemented due to time, or money, or space, or any of the things that the school committee has some say about?
Yeah. I think for me, honestly, we want to go deeper. We have what's in, we need. We need to go deeper and really, we just need to go deeper. I think it's just, now that we understand where our kiddos are, our climate is steady, it's a safe school. I think now we're really fine-tuning what the kiddos need, and really what I was talking about is, is the what I need groups, is we're gonna look at their data and say, what do they need? And then, what different things can we put in place? You know, we have some interventions, but I think we're always looking for better interventions, or different, or more. So that's kind of where my lens is, is what can we do to really hit the nail on the head? Because we have supports in place, and they're fantastic. And as I shared, you know, I, I've always bring my data to Dr. Valar and say, I need this. We, I was able to get two extra reading support teachers this past year, because our data showed we needed it. Kids were coming, and they weren't able to access the curriculum, because they were still learning their letters. So I think those pieces were, I think, just going deeper with what we have, is, is for me, is my lens. But thank you. I'll let you know. I'm not shy.
I did a lot of years teaching reading, and I would have voted for those.
Yeah, yeah. Dr. Valar knows, if I have something, I ask. And I, I, I'm very similar in my thinking is, I, I'm gonna ask you for this because I need it because of this. I don't just say, hey, you want to give me some extra people? That doesn't work. I mean, I, you know, bottom line, we can't do that. So, yes, sir?
I'm assuming that when you say go deeper, you're referring to fine-tuning each year, and it gets stronger?
Yes.
And better?
Absolutely. And I really think making sure that the, the children are receiving the right interventions. Where, some, at some point, when I first got here, it was all broad-based. It was, everyone sort of got the same thing. Well, that, that doesn't work, right? You, you sort of just shoot down the middle, and you hope to get somebody in the, in the, right? So you can't do that. So we're really fine-tuning on like, what does every child need? And really, part of what we want to be able to do is, is have the fluidity of thinking, if, if a child needs this, and they're sitting in this seat, okay, but they really need to be in that seat, we can put them in that seat. We just have to think about the personnel, and make sure the personnel are in the right seats. I really believe like, and I've said it before to other people, like, I put people on the bus, now they've got to figure out where they're sitting and where the right place to be, because they're the experts. I hire people that I feel can do the job, otherwise I wouldn't hire them, right? And I have faith in them, and I give them support. But now if they say, I think we need to do this, let's try it. It's less more, it's less directive than it was when I first got here. It should be. I mean, honestly, over time, you get to know your staff, they get to know you, and there are certain things they have autonomy with, and, but there are certain things that we need to do scriptedly, because, scriptedly? That's a new word. But because it's the right thing for the kiddos, and they need that. They need the automaticity. So that's what we're working on. Thank you.
I just had one more question. There was, there was one slide that you went through regarding the different tiers, and the, I don't know if it was, I was kind of missing, there was a percentage, like, I think your tier one had gotten to 100%, and tier two and tier three. And I wasn't sure exactly, actually, what the percentage was.
That's a great question. So that was the tiered fidelity inventory, I think you're speaking of. Yes.
Right, exactly.
Yep. So when I first got here, I just want to make sure I say the right number, because I don't want to misquote myself. When I, before I got here, it was at 63%. So 63% of the staff working the way that they're supposed to, on the systems that are supposed to be put. So we're putting PBIS into practice. We're learning what all the pieces of PBIS are, we're doing it with fidelity, we're doing the specific praise, we're doing the opportunities to respond, all of that. It was only happening about 63% of the time.
So specifically implementation. It was being implemented.
Implementation, absolutely. Exactly.
At about.
It's whatever it is, how, how are we as a team implementing it? So that's, so now at tier one, we're at 100%. And I'll say, you know, plus or minus a percent here or there, right? Because of the day, everyone has a day. But we're so much stronger that, with the specific phrase. And I'm gonna tell you, we just talked again, we still have room to grow in that, as we hire new people and they're learning the system. But that's okay, because the school itself is stronger. It's, it's healthier. It's healthier than when I arrived.
And to add to that, so the fundamental change, I guess, strategy we have is implementing what we call multi-tiered systems of support. And so that's where you see that triangle. And the idea behind it is, 80% of your students in a healthy school are doing just fine with your typical classroom implementation, tier one. Tier two is for additional 15% or so children, they need something extra, a little more focused. And this can be behaviorally or academically in different areas. And of course, at the top is the 5%. That's a very normal distribution, not always what you see in a school. We also apply that to implementation on the adult side. And so that's where you saw there, that generated your question, was about us measuring adult behavior and capacity the same way that we measure student capacity. So you'll hear us talk about tiers a lot.
So would you think it was a, a fair to say that when you're looking at that 100%, that's the teachers are implementing the tier one system 100% of the time, and tier two, the teachers or other staff are implementing the system 80-whatever percent of the time?
Yeah, and it's, part of it, it's, the tiered fidelity instrument is something that was developed by researchers over the last 30 years in the Positive Behaviors Intervention Support Research. It's a national group. University of Connecticut, University of Oregon are the two bookends on all this research. So it's a tool, to kind of give you an idea where a school is in the implementation of PBIS, basic tier one, two, and three strategies. It's a snapshot, so it can change. Resources sometimes change, people change. Even a team can be performing well the one time you go through and you do it, and the next year, maybe they're down a little bit. The key is to always monitor the data and adjust to the data. It helps us make sure we're doing what we think we are doing, right? So it's an important snapshot. And so that's why it's done every year. And there are other tools that we use, to measure whole district capacity and such, to try to make sure we have fidelity of what implementation, you know, we've all committed to.
So I, just to finish off the slide, so as, it sounds like as we're learning the system, tier one is pretty comfortable and in place and fully implemented.
Yes.
Tier two is getting there pretty close. You're pretty comfortable with that, too?
I am comfortable with that, because, because we're still learning some different supports for interventions, but what we have going is going well in tier two.
Right. And then tier three, you're still kind of figuring out exactly.
We're just learning, we're just getting training currently. So already being at 53% based off of what we know is good practice, we feel good with that, because we're just getting the training this year.
Yeah, and when you look across the spectrum of student need, on the socio-emotional side, a tier three student may need psychiatric services, right? And so getting a child psychiatrist to get engaged with a family, we're talking very difficult things that take a lot of time. And then potentially, there's med management, there's therapy or training, you know, all kinds of stuff that can go into addressing kids with really severe needs. So the higher in tiers you go, the more complex the work is. It's also more personalized. What I often say to staff, the extent to which we can meet the needs of every child is the extent to which we improve as a district, right? That has to be the focus, and that's why multi-tiered systems of sports is the strategy. It's about how do we get as personalized as we can, recognizing, that's easy to say, very hard to do. I mean, if you're a classroom teacher with 20, 25 students in front of you, it's great for me to say differentiate for the needs of the kids in front of you. In reality, that's very hard, and so we have to work to try to find ways to make that as easy as possible for staff, because it's super hard to differentiate with a group of kids.
That's why when I was saying, if, if a kiddo needs to be in this seat and not that seat, and that's okay, that's what Dr. Valar's saying, is we're gonna differentiate what we do, help them be successful.
I'm sorry. So I was, I was actually, I was thinking about the tiered fidelity, and I wrote it down. And so, to go along with that, I was just curious, how are you collecting that data?
The tiered fidelity inventory?
Yeah.
So that's a great question. So we come, there's three times a year that they come. Are, we have our tiered coach, our coaches here, we have district leadership, so Dr. Kelly Williamson will come over as the director of socio-emotional learning. And we also then have our partners with, UConn will come. And they'll really, we'll go through the team, we'll go through the inventory that from PBIS that Dr. Valar was talking about. It's all research-based. And we, really, we, we poll ourselves. We also do classroom visits, is it working in there? And it's nice, because the classroom visits, I don't tend to be the one to go, because I know what's happening, so it's nice to have different eyes look. And they'll check in with kids, and think about things that are happening. You know, they may say something like, you know, how often do you get a wildcat cash? And when someone gives it to you, what do they say to you, those sorts of things. So it's spot checking. So we do that very, very consistently. And then we talk about where we think we fell.
Yeah.
And then it's, it goes into the computer and all that, and we have this, it's a very specific tool, and it's on PBIS National? Nope, that's the wrong word.
Dot org.
Dot org. PBIS.org.
I was just curious, because, you know, it's easy to collect, you know, the data that, you know, students, you know, take a quiz or take a test or whatever, and then we have the outcomes.
Right, sure.
That are right in front of us, but to figure out if your staff is following through with your expectations, it's a little bit more difficult.
We also do, we collect our SWISS data for our office referrals. So we're able to see at any point of the day, what's a hot time of the day, for like, you know, is, is lunchtime bubbling up? Do we need to put more supports in lunch? Or is it recess time bubbling up? And a very simple thing, when I got here, we had, the most referrals came out of recess. So I asked the staff, who goes with them to recess? They said, oh, the, the aides go. I went, nope, teachers need to go with them, you know them best. It was a simple flip, and it wasn't that, you know, it wasn't that big of a deal, but it was, because they went down quite a bit. Because it's easier to contain kiddos in the cafeteria, and for people who don't know them as well, versus outside. And then they also get that social interaction, because it's, it's all about the human connection.
And so, I guess to go along with that, does the, that tiered fidelity, does that, do you use that to help you with your evaluations and things?
That's a great question. I do not. I don't. It's, it's a global school. It's not a, it's not a gotcha. People who know me in this building, I'm not about the gotcha. I'm about like, okay, that didn't work, what do we do next? Before you got here, which I know many of you may have seen, I was having my bi-weekly meeting with one of the teachers who's just, wants support. She asked me. So every other, two, every other week, we meet for a half hour or so, and just glows and grows. And I've got my notes right here, next steps for her, and next steps for me. Yeah, I don't believe in gotchas. They don't work.
I like that.
The other questions?
Can I just make one comment to go along with that?
You can make a comment.
I, I think that's a great thing, because I feel like if you're gonna implement something that is this important, it's important for the people that work for you to feel comfortable asking you for help. And if it's an evaluation, a tool for evaluations, people are gonna be less likely to visit you and ask you questions about it. So I think that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion second? All in favor?